Thank you. I thank you all. Hope everyone had a good lunch. We will reconvene. We will begin with item two, an item brought forward by Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Lawson-Reemer. We will go first to Supervisor Desmond for any introductory comments you'd like to make on item two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that and the consideration of the board here today. So I would like to thank Supervisor Tara Lawson-Reemer for her co-authoring this board letter with me. The request is actually for the county to explore developing a by-name list, and a by-name list, not a by-number list, to come from one of -- that actually came from one of North County's largest homeless service providers, Interfaith Community Services, which is in Escondido, and it was -- Escondido previously was in Lawson-Reemer's district, now it's a mine, and so they asked and we delivered. So a person who is homeless may be getting different treatment and resources from providers across the country. Somebody homeless in Chula Vista might get services, might get a diagnosis or things like that, and then if they move to Oceanside or some other part of the county or the city of San Diego, we have to kind of start over from square one again with some of these -- with people if we don't already have that information. So this will help inform those providers to better serve these individuals. In researching by-name lists at the local governments, we've been able to work more efficiently to reduce the amount of residents experiencing homelessness. And I think this is also true for San Diego County. The Regional Task Force, which we're very grateful for all of their work on homeless, works with two independent by-name lists, one's for veterans, another one is for youth. And in the 2022 point-in-time count, the areas with the greatest and only the real, really marked improvement were the veterans and youth because we're able to track them and have a better idea of the services they were getting countywide. And the homeless veterans decreased by 30%, and the youth on the street without shelter decreased by 6%. So a by-name list is a more personal way of serving individuals. Each person who participates must give their own consent. So this is by consent only to be part of the list. And I'm hopeful that the creation of this list will allow our continuum of care to enhance data collection and to improve the way we deliver services. So this board has worked very hard to elevate the plight of those who are experiencing homelessness. And I'm hopeful that exploring ways we can -- other ways, we can provide a greater connectivity amongst providers and their clients and the government to assist in triaging more homeless from the streets and into services and housing. So I urge the board to support this board action to explore the feasibility of establishing a by-name list. And I noticed in the agenda item and with Supervisor Anderson's remarks this morning of, you know, doing this countywide, and which that is the full intent of this whole thing. Because we did mention in here that perhaps if it's a phased-in approach to work to start in North County inland, particularly Escondido, where Interfaith Services is located, and they've already got an agreement with the city of Escondido to start this out. Now whether it's a phased approach or if county staff comes back with, "No, we want to do it all at once and we're able to handle it," I certainly anticipate this to be countywide and maybe just, you know, it starts in Escondido or in the unincorporated area. Whatever works best, I'm open to for those -- for that -- those types of information once you bring it back. It's more of a feasibility study and how best to do it, how much it's going to cost, and that's really what I'm looking for out of this. So I don't know if Supervisor Lawson-Reemer, you wanted to make any comments?
Yeah, just very briefly. You know, I think we spend so much time talking about data and how important it is to have good data in order to make good decisions. And that's also reflected in this initiative brought forth today. It's really difficult to address homeless and to address our homelessness crisis when we don't even know who's homeless in our communities. And this by-name list, I think, would -- could go a long way. I'm just really eager to hear back from county staff on how feasible it would be to do this. You know, we have these point-in-time counts that provide a snapshot of homelessness at one moment in time, but it doesn't really tell us longitudinally who's homeless and when and how long they stay homeless and if it's the same people and how often they're accessing different kinds of services. I mean, just really so much information that we need in order to properly design programs to meet the needs in our community. We don't have any of this information. So it's just, I found it daunting to even figure out how we craft appropriate interventions when we don't have a by-name list. So, and I do Supervisor Anderson's question, my intent certainly in bringing this forward is that it would be a countywide program. And I think I would be eager for recommendations from county staff on if we were to have a phased-in approach, where it would start. And I think that would be up to county staff to report back with a recommendation on what they think would be most appropriate.
All right. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you very much. I participated in this last point in time, and it was my first time doing it. And one of the things that stood out to me is so many of the providers, the NGOs that are out there on the streets working with the folks, knew everybody's name. And they had, you know, part of the success is building that relationship. And then, you know, with the 17 parking spaces that we just brought online in East County, which are, by the way, thank you, old colleagues, for all your help and support in my district because I couldn't have done it without all your support and votes. But a lot of these folks, you know, they have kids in our schools, but they're transient. They're not always in the same place. And kudos to the both of you coming up with this strategy because I think it's brilliant. I just, when I read it, I thought, well, I don't want to just do it in North County. I want to make sure that my district participates because who's to say that somebody in a car in my 17 spaces moves to Escondido or someplace else, perhaps pursuing a job or job opportunity? And I want to make sure that we give staff the opportunity to implement it with the highest return on investment so that we help the most amount of people. And, you know, back in October 19th, I had presented a compassionate emergency solutions and pathways board letter that you all supported, which I, again, appreciate, which has helped start all the things I'm doing. And initially, it said for East County. And then somebody pointed out, well, maybe it'd be good to go countywide. And I said, absolutely. Because I, you know, I want to solve the problem. I don't want to push them into -- I don't want to push people into your districts. I want to get them off the street. And we have to be united as we approach the homeless in mental health in the county. So I was just looking for that same professional courtesy to go countywide. I misunderstood because when I read the board letter, it sounded like it was going to be North County only. And Nick and his team and Barbara and everybody else at the county has done a fantastic job with the things and how quickly we're moving. And, you know, I owned a drugstore house years ago, and the secret to success was don't touch it twice. Just touch it once. And I'm afraid that as we interact and as the homeless teams go out, this is a great time to collect that data now and front-load it as opposed to waiting to implement it after we've had proven success. So thank you for your courtesy of including, looking at countywide. So I'm for it.
Awesome. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move. Thank you.
All right.
I'll move here.
Motion by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Lawson-Reemer, and we call forward the public speakers on this item.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 11 requests to speak on item two, five in person and six by phone. Also note for the record that we received six ecomments, two in favor and four in opposition. Any members of the public that requested to speak on item two by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, with those in favor, followed by those in opposition of this item. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals in favor: Jordan Bean and Tamara Kohler. We follow by the speakers in opposition: Paul Henkin, Audra and Oliver Twist. You'll have two minutes to address the board and I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Jordan Bean, Director of Policy and Communications for the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, speaking in favor of this item. The practice of using a by-name list is a proven practice in addressing homelessness. RTFH, as the area's continuum of care, currently uses two very intentional by-name list efforts on addressing homelessness among veterans and transitionally-aged youth. We support and endorse this practice and have seen the successes of using this practice in other parts of the country. As the COC, we are supportive of working with the county and considering how the by-name list approach can be a local and regional tool to know everyone by name. I want to be clear that this is not a waiting list for housing, but a way to know everyone and organize our efforts to address their individual needs. It helps prioritize resources and efforts to effectively house homeless populations. It is person-centric and community-focused. We're looking forward to working with Barbara's team at the Department of Homeless Solutions and Equitable Communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Paul Henkin. So, using by-name list, privacy for abortion seekers, but no privacy for the homeless. Apparently, a by-name list is not even included in the federal plan requirements on which your by-name list is based. That's according to the agenda. But today's recommendation aims to expand on this goal. And while the caption says, "The data," which, by the way, is a lot more than names, is, quote, "shared with consent," unquote. I think most of us know the extent of hacking involving both government and supposedly secure systems. The question is whether it is desirable to invade the privacy of the homeless systematically or only as legally mandated, mainly if they commit crimes. So would we using this -- be using this comprehensive data list to pre-select people? For what? Punishment? Forced moves? Targeted confiscation of property? I think you need to rethink this. Thank you for your attention.
I just want to reiterate, this is by consent only. We're not forcing any names. Thank you.
Next speaker. Your time's up. Next speaker.
I go by the name Audra. So you guys plan to end homelessness in five years. That's fantastic. It'll never happen because you guys want to build 100,000 homes, and that ain't going to happen either. But yeah, you want to use people's data. It's crazy. This is like going into the social credit score, but not for people who want to murder babies, right? Yeah. We don't want to use their data because that is against the constitution, like all this stuff. We can't use their data against them. But you guys use data against, like, what, the unvaccinated, right? Like, oh my gosh, you can't come in here because your data shows that you're not a part of the Klan. And, you know, they use it for elections to entice people. Or they, you know, hand out CCW data that's used against the people. So at what point are we going to say it's either inclusive and you don't use anybody's data, or you take everybody's data for everything? But you can't be like, "Oh, we don't want it for this. Like, I need to go murder babies, but don't use that against me. But if I'm homeless, then you want to track and trace me." That's the social credit score stuff. You guys realize that. You know what that is, Nathan, because, I mean, you're a part of the World Economic Forum, and that's what you guys push. But it's just interesting because you guys want to, like, blame COVID for everything, like, COVID is -- the pandemic is the reason people are now more homeless. Well, I'd like to say, that is true. If COVID is an acronym for covert operators vested in death, which is what you guys are. So you're the new COVID. You're the reason all this stuff takes place, all while you sit there and go like, "No, we're trying to help you." But if you're homeless and you don't have any kids, I'm sorry, there is no help for you. It's crazy. You guys are funny.
Next speaker, please.
So just real quick, I'm not sure if I can talk now. I wanted to change my position. I just did a blanket no, but I'm actually in favor of this. Can I talk now or do you want me to -- okay. Oliver Twist, I just want to say that I am in favor of this. I think it's a really good idea. I know one of the things that have been talked about in the services was churn, people coming in and out of the system. I'm also concerned about fraud. So I do believe that if we track people by name and we can get hard data of how long they stay in the system, where they go, and it will go a lot to moving forward and really committing resources so that we keep some of this in and out of the system and minimize for the county employees as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I would remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll begin with our first caller.
Hi, Supervisors. My name is Greg Angel, CEO at Interfaith Community Services. Thank you so much for taking this item up today. Each supervisor who has spoken, I think, did an excellent job from my perspective as a service provider, helping people overcome homelessness in North County and throughout San Diego County. Each of you did an excellent job describing the value of the by-name list. I'll just highlight a couple of items that as to why this is important. A lot of the data that this list will include, we already have. What this will do that we don't have now is organize and allow access to that data in a much more functionally effective way. We have by-name lists already for veterans and youth. Why? Because there are specific resources for veterans, and we can tailor our strategies to help veterans experiencing homelessness because there are unique resources and unique strengths they have to be able to access those resources. The same can be said for youth. What the by-name list will allow, as we expand, with your support and leadership countywide, will allow us to similarly target regional homelessness. Supervisor Anderson, there are resources in East County that individuals who are unsheltered in East County are particularly positioned to access. Individuals who are unsheltered in a community are proven to do better overcoming homelessness within that particular community. So this will really allow us, the service providers, local government, healthcare providers, to work together off of a shared roster, provide more person-centered care, and also measure overall system effectiveness, a critical piece to performance improvement. So appreciate your consideration. Appreciate Supervisor Desmond and Lawson-Reemer bringing this item forward, and appreciate the support of other service providers who have voiced their support for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello. My name is Mindy Wright. I'm speaking on behalf of SDCS, formerly South Bay Community Services, in strong support of this agenda item, which will bring us one step closer to providing the efficient and effective services our community deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
This is true. Really great privacy points, Paul. Also, when the affordable housing costs too much, give people parking lots, right, Joel? Got it. From the May 24 meeting, according to the local homeless action plan data tables, about 45% of homeless are actually sheltered. Most have a significant mental illness and are chronically homeless. And most homeless are classified as white. And according to the county's lack of logic, apparently, white homeless people are experiencing racism that's making them homeless. No figs. So sad. All of the outcome goals describe the trackable data goal as people accessing services by race and ethnicity. They don't seem to be interested in programs actually working, just as certain preferred colors registered on their chart. Total cost for all these services, including prevention, diversion, treatment, housing, et cetera, is over $1.2 billion. Even reading the updated version of the item today, there are still more homeless people sheltered than not. It sounds like things are going pretty well, especially considering most people who are homeless actually want to stay that way for a variety of reasons. But according to this item's overview, apparently, the federal government is maintaining a homeless management information system, and it's beneficial to stakeholders, some unnamed monkey business people. Now they're transforming the system into a by-name list, where every single homeless individual they can find will be completely profiled and stored forever into a federal computer system. It's sounding even more dangerous to be homeless now.
Thank you. And Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
All right. We've got a motion by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Lawson-Reemer. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors being present and voting aye.
We'll go to agenda item number 19, second consideration of adoption of ordinance. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Vargas. May I ask the court to call forward the public speakers on this item?
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have four requests to speak on item 19, two in person and two by phone. We also received one ecomment in favor of this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on item 19 by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. Both speakers are in opposition to this item. As your name is called, please come forward. I'd like to invite forward Audra and Paul Henkin. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, Paul Henkin again. In another Wizard of Oz moment, the original board letter said the COVID-19 pandemic provided an opportunity for the board to reevaluate ordinances to consider how they might affect businesses. It should be evaluating as often as possible. Businesses are struggling all the time. The original letter goes on to say, "In the last 30 years, there have been no complaints, violations, suspensions, or denials of any amusements established under applicant." So why the repeal? The issue is regulation versus safety. There seems to be no overregulation, so let's be careful not to compromise safety, especially for our kids or grandkids, especially with the placement of men known to be sexually violent predators in East County. Current law separates the drinking areas, areas for drinking, from areas for gaming. It also prohibits drunk or disorderly contact. Do we really want this kind of stuff in front of our kids, perhaps putting them in harm's way? Repeal the ordinance might make things easier for few, but when you get alcohol and gaming together, surely law enforcement costs will go up as well as societal costs. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
He's the name Audra. It's just interesting that you guys want to take out their need for a permit for stuff, but then you have permits that everybody has to get so that you guys can get more money. And if they're not in compliance, they can be arrested. You guys just like to arrest people for whatever it is? Like, if you don't give us the money we're asking for, we're going to arrest you. But you guys can do whatever you want to the people, and nobody's arresting you. It's crazy. But you want to, like, if you don't have your permit and you're not, uh, why are we doing, like, we don't need more government in our lives, and I'll say it a million times, like, we don't need these licenses or contracts. They're like prison bars that you put up around the people every time we engage in it. And it's like, you're not free. We're going to make sure that we have our hands in everything and tell you what to do. It's BS. It's like you want to sign contracts with everything so that you can have your hands in money, so that you can take it from the people and continue to do these things. Like, we don't need to engage in this. The people need to stop doing that and asking for permission. And look who we're asking for permission from, people that think they're, like, on a pedestal above us. We're equal. You're no better than anybody. But you guys act like it. You set up, like, look how high that is. You're raised up, right? And like, we have to be down here because, you know, we're not equal. I mean, at what point are you guys actually going to do something that's good for the county and the people? I don't know. I mean, maybe if you looked at those voting machines, that'd be a start. But there is no fraud. There is not evidence at the DA's office or the sheriff's. Nope. It's a conspiracy theory. It's fantastic. You guys are clowns.
Now hear from the individual that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments.
Hola. Mi nombre es Truth, y no soy miembro de ASPE. Estoy serio influenciado por Nora para hablar español, pero renunciar correctamente, ella habla inglés. Haré todo lo posible. Thanks for the translation, Paul. Primero, Nora, noto que siempre promuevo determinados temas latinos y nunca latinos. ¿Por qué? ¿Dónde está toda la comunidad? Okay. Estoy cambiando el guion de este artículo porque el agenda de conciencia miento era banana. Mayo, Nathan, dice que los juegos mecánicos requieren una inspección y una tarifa por seguridad. El ego cambio de opinión y decidió renunciar a las tarifas y renunciar a la seguridad. El ego cambió de opinión. Pero nosotros, la gente, nos hemos olvidado como tú, Nora, y yo, o Nathan, Tara y Jim, han castado innumables pequeños empresas que eran para siempre. Aruenaste las vidas de familias de soldados de San Diego. ¿Dónde están las familias ahora? Demasiado tarde. Ponés en la emergency a la violencia. Nadie lo cree. Por último, Nora, muchas personas no les gusta cuando comenzas a hablar español y no informas al público que está traduciendo el inglés. Es no cool. Nathan, no lo olvides. Tranquilo. Tiempo de música, por favor.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
We have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair Vargas. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors being present and voting aye.
We'll now go to agenda item 20, Child Welfare Working Group Recommendations. I want to thank the working group for the recommendations we're about to hear. There's been considerable energy and effort over the last few years to implement the 88 recommendations, and I appreciate and I appreciate Dr. Giardino and their entire team, along with everyone who's a member of the Child and Family Strengthening Advisory Council for their work. I am excited about what we're seeing here, excited to see the progress we've made on keeping siblings together, and excited for the pending kind of reorganization and structure that we're gonna move forward to in the future. I think we've come a really long way in our child welfare department in a few short years, increasing staffing, increasing programs, increasing support for our workers, putting in place, again, all 88 recommendations and others to move forward. We certainly always have more to do, and we always judge ourselves not on what we've done, but what else we can do. But I'm just really, really pleased with where we are and where we're headed, and I really appreciate these recommendations we're gonna hear, and we'll turn it over to staff for presentation.
Well, thank you, Chair Fletcher, and good afternoon, members of the board. Indeed, the Child Welfare Services Review Group was established to assess and report on the state of our county's child welfare system, which was, I would say, in lots of need a number of years ago. The working group came up with 88 recommendations, and we are thrilled to report to you that all 88 of those recommendations have been successfully implemented. Today, your board will hear an update on the completion of those recommendations and how they are already contributing to the care, the safety, and well-being of 2,300 youth and families that our Child Welfare Services serves. This work would not be possible without the dedicated Child Welfare Services leadership, our line staff, and our community partners, and the parents, who have committed to ensuring that every child grows up safe and nurtured. Here to present with me is Dr. Kimberly Giardina, our Director for Child Welfare Services, and Alfredo Guantardo, our Assistant Director for Child Welfare Services. Kim?
Thank you, Nick. The working group consisted of 13 members, representing the County Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council and a continuum of community stakeholders. The group was tasked to take a look at and identify system improvement needs for child welfare, including quality assurance, personnel, training, policy barriers, and outcome data to ensure the health and safety of dependent youth in foster care. On December 11, 2018, following multiple engagements and significant considerations, the working group submitted to the board the Child Welfare Services Working Group Report containing 88 recommendations in broad categories, which included well-being, child welfare services culture, structure and operations, resource family quality improvement, workforce, and legal and policy barriers. Additionally, the board directed the chief administrative officer to form a subcommittee, which included two board members, to work with the Health and Human Services Agency and the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council to review the working group report and its recommendations. On March 26, 2019, in response to these recommendations, the board adopted Ordinance Number 10598, repealing and replacing provisions in the County Administrative Code to create the Child and Family Strengthening Advisory Board of San Diego County. The new advisory board was created to have broad oversight over the county's child welfare system and was charged with monitoring the implementation of the recommendations. In March 2022, after dedicating a myriad of resources and time and sharing expertise and lived experience, Child Welfare Services, in partnership with the Child and Family Strengthening Advisory Board, its subcommittees, the foster care community, and stakeholders concluded a three-year undertaking and completed all 88 recommendations. As the advisory board overseeing the efforts to address the recommendations, the Child and Family Strengthening Advisory Board established subcommittees to take action on the recommendations, maximizing community expertise, resources, and supports to aid Child Welfare Services in implementation efforts. Recommendations were subsequently grouped into three focus areas: organizational structure, workforce development, and child and family services. Guided by the Child Welfare Services Report published in March 2019 detailing a plan for implementation of each recommendation, Child Welfare formed an internal implementation workgroup consisting of 15 social worker and supervising social worker staff representing all regions and programs. Staff reviewed the recommendations and contributed input on implementation strategies that would successfully affect change. This implementation workgroup continuously engaged with the advisory board on recommendations and implementation updates. I will now hand it over to Alfredo to share more about actions taken in each of the three focus areas.
Thank you, Kim. Actions taken to enhance the CWS organizational structure include restructuring the CWS Office of the Embusmen to provide three options to address concerns effectively. It includes the CWS Office of the Embusmen, the Resource Parent Embusmen, and the HHSA Agency Compliance Office. Integrated regional placement units under two managers to ensure consistent practice and consolidated all specialty programs placement units into one to provide specialized placement services and supports. Created SDcareis4kids.com, a recruitment and resource website where potential new and current resource families can access information about the resource family approval process, foster and adoptive resource family resources, and mentor volunteer and advocate opportunities. Since its launch in June of 2021, there have been an average of 2,625 visits to the website each month. Additionally, Child Welfare Services acquired a Binti software to help with resource family application and approval management, sibling placement, and child and resource caregiver matching. Binti is a dual interfacing system for families and Child Welfare Services staff that provides easy-to-navigate tools for families to upload, sign, and retrieve documents and allow Child Welfare Services staff to complete documents in real time to expedite the approval of the renewal process. As of July 1, 2022, 89% of the resource families in the approval process have access to Binti online. For workforce development, actions taken to increase supports for Child Welfare Services staff include: added three staff psychologists to address and reduce the impact of secondary traumatic stress and promote staff resiliency and well-being; applied the use of a centralized assignment tool, a workload equity tool, to help facilitate equitable workload management, determine staffing levels, and promote productivity; created the workforce and training development units to provide newly hired social work staff with support, training, and coaching in the field, ensuring consistency across all regions. Since June of 2020, Child Welfare Services has onboarded 245 new staff through the workforce and training development units. We expanded trauma supportive services available to staff to include individual and group follow-ups regarding critical incidents. As of July of 2022, 90 staff have accessed these trauma-informed supports. Child Welfare Services also trained staff on components for effective clinician experience and reducing trauma, otherwise known as C-CERT, to increase staff awareness and understanding of the effects of secondary traumatic stress in the workplace. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, 448 staff were trained in C-CERT. There are also several key accomplishments in Child and Family Services focus area that contributed to a strengthening delivery of child and family services, including creating a special emergency response unit staffed with dedicated social workers with specialized training and interviewing children to investigate reports of maltreatment while in foster care; increased sibling placements and interactions through the following actions: prioritize emergency response family homes for sibling placements; and partnered with Angels Foster Family Network to establish new guidelines to increase sibling placement capacity with their agency. We updated Child Welfare Services visitation policies, requiring a sibling visitation plan and actions to provide frequent sibling interactions with siblings cannot be placed together. As of June of 2022, 76% of children in care were placed with all or some siblings. Additionally, Child Welfare Services has also reinforced supports for families in strengthening least restrictive interventions for families by creating a voluntary services policy requiring a multidisciplinary approach to determine family appropriateness. Child Welfare Services also developed a brochure that enforced families of their rights, program eligibility, and expectations so that families can make an informed decision when entering into a voluntary services agreement. Child Welfare Services is also taking steps to address youth who go absent without leave from Polizzi Children's Center. These efforts include enhancing behavioral health services and other supportive services through different partnerships that provide mental health clinicians onsite at PCC; safety and harm reduction strategies, telehealth services, mentoring, and the utilization of crisis response teams to quickly adjust behavioral health emergencies. I will now hand it back to Kim to share our efforts to sustain change.
Thank you, Alfredo. The key accomplishments highlighted are some of many efforts and positive changes made by child welfare over the last several years. With the support of numerous federal and state legislation intended to keep children safe with families, we have engaged in significant improvements above and beyond the 88 recommendations to strengthen families and enhance the child welfare system. As a result of these changes and actions to address the recommendations, dedicated staff, and an overall shared commitment to a better child welfare system, we have experienced a 21% reduction in the number of youth in foster care in the past six years. Child welfare will continue to work with the Child and Family Strengthening Advisory Board and the subcommittees to monitor the outcomes and results of these improvements to make certain that the actions taken towards a strengthened child welfare system continue to yield positive results. We will also continue to ensure transparency and continuous meaningful engagement with the community in identifying and addressing the needs of children, youth, and families interacting with the child welfare system. The unending work, countless hours and dedication shared to effect positive change and improve and strengthen our system will be utilized to chart the course towards a better way for child and family well-being. Today's action requests the board to receive the Child Welfare Services Working Group Recommendations presentation, concluding the actions required in response to the 88 recommendations submitted on December 11, 2018. Completing all 88 recommendations does not indicate that the work for an improved child welfare system has ended. It only signals that a reinforced foundation has been laid for continuous quality improvement and positions Child Welfare Services to better align with other initiatives. We appreciate the steadfast effort and dedication of the Child and Family Strengthening Advisory Board, its subcommittees, our foster care community, system partners, and our Child Welfare Services staff. The journey was a three-year major undertaking that fostered meaningful and expanded engagements, improved transparency, and equitable opportunities to address disproportionality, increase racial equity, and contribute to change. We remain committed to supporting children, youth, and families and recognize the strength of communities and partnerships when affecting change. It is with heartfelt gratitude that we extend our sincerest thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. This concludes the presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to receive the report and accept the recommendations. Is there a second? All right. May I ask the clerk to call for any public speakers, and we'll come back to the board.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have seven requests to speak on this item, three in person and four by phone. Also note that we did not receive any e-commerce on this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on Item 20, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. All individuals are in opposition to this item. As your name is called, please come forward. I'd like to invite forward Audra, Paul Henkin, and Consuelo. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
Paul Henkin. I applaud making all the CWS policies publicly available, but once again, many of the recommendations are wrong-headed. Public recognition is for those whose work personifies certain values? I mean, it sounds like anyone who dissents is liable to be fired or not to be recognized, kind of like China or Russia. The report says, "Authorized places child should rest with worker focused on the wishes and needs of the children and family." Children of divorced parents should not go between parents. They need to be in one place. It says, "Attempt to bring homes that can accept multiple children free until they can be filled by sibling sets rather than individual children." This should be for those siblings who need to be placed together and perhaps want. They need to have a choice. I understand that workers need training, but it should not simply be once a year or on a schedule, but as needed. Not sure what this BS about enhancing education and training to create better experiences of CWS, improving the lives of children, et cetera. I mean, weren't we already doing this? How much will this, just this line item, cost? You want to change the chair of the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council? It's CAPCC. I mean, I hope it's a legal person. And then you want to review the embusmen's office that handle complaints to determine if it should be part of CWS? Of course it should. I mean, thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, please.
He's the name, Audra. So it's just very telling that there's 88 recommendations, and one of them isn't to investigate the child neglect or abuse, because why would you do that? That would be stupid. But even the fact that you want to break up siblings is just very sad, and you want to obtain more funding, of course. But yeah, it's just interesting. In California, the number of referrals made to Child Welfare Agency is 359,699. If we think about the fact that human trafficking is going on within these agencies, and it's not just for sexual pleasures, it's actually for experimentation, and they do that on children. And there's, like, that needs to be looked into because the things that are going on in this government and the things that you guys act like we're trying to help the children, you're actually not, and you can take children from families, like, if they didn't want to vaccinate their children. So the whole system is totally flawed. And you're actually not protecting the children because there is abuse going on in this system. And it's like, every 1,000 children, it's like 40.9 kids. I don't know how you can have .9 of a child, but whatever. But yeah, so it's like, I mean, why is that not something that's being looked into? That's a serious problem, that they're even being abused and neglected. And it's like, but yeah, let's just, you know, keep them in this system and not address that. Like, you guys will meet our maker one day, and I just hope that before that day comes that you turn away from your wicked ways. Because when you meet him, he will say, "Turn away from me. I never freaking knew you."
Next speaker, please.
Consuelo. Safe and nurtured. Yeah, right. Child welfare. I'm curious. Are any of you a product of the child welfare system? No? Okay. Well, because those are the ones that should be up here making, having a say in what's gonna be happening. I just pulled something up online regarding what these kids have to endure when they're in the system. Something, it says, "Moreover, Something, it says, moreover, the child welfare system was never intended to serve the vast numbers of children and families that are involved in the system today. Substance abuse, inadequate housing, health needs, parental incarceration, and racial discrimination are just one of the issues that challenge the capacity of the child welfare system and its staff to provide adequate services to the families and children it serves. Yeah, I think the numbers that we see are not, you know, even close to what's really happening. These are just the numbers that are being reported of the abuse of these kids. And I don't even get what government thinks they can do about it. I mean, you got to fix the freaking broken, the family system, the family unit, and not just keep throwing money blindly and thinking you're going to do something about it. Anyways, I'm sorry, kids.
Now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep.
Your name is Trup. I think you know me. For the record, even if you guys refuse to follow the rules and translate my speeches, I'll just speak in other languages next time, or translate it myself, okay? Good points, Audra and Consuelo. Reading this item made me have a lot of questions. Here they are. Recommendation three, who are the stakeholders? What are forward-looking core values? Recommendation seven, why does the public's consciousness have to be influenced, and in what way exactly? Recommendation eight, why is the chair of the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council going to masquerade as a community representative at an executive level to set an agenda? That's what it said. Recommendation 28, conflict resolution in the workplace is really just bringing a group of employees to a consensus set ahead of time by the company directors, also known as the Hegelian dialectic. Recommendation 32, why does the quality of face-to-face contact and home visits need to be assessed? No one can figure out that human contact is a positive or what? Recommendation 57, it's good to see the consideration of not breaking up siblings who may be able to be adopted together as a set. This seems to be one of the only good recommendations in this entire item. Recommendation 80, using community partners as a go-between for a family applicant seems like a violation of some private information with an outside stakeholder. It might even be illegal. Recommendation 81, the use of a psychological evaluation tool sounds like a scary concept, especially if any of these supervisors have anything to do with it. The love of buckets of money can change results into some serious monkey business at the expense of children.
And Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Kim, I've been a part of all the Child and Family Strengthening, joined by Vice Chair Vargas, really appreciate the tremendous work that has gone into it, and in particular, the willingness to embrace change and move in different directions and do different things. And I think that certainly we have a lot more to do, but there's a lot as a county to be really proud of, so we appreciate your leadership. I'll go to Supervisor Vargas, and then we'll go to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a few remarks.
Thank you, Kim, and as well as all the community stakeholders that have been working diligently in the implementation of the 88 recommendations. I know that I came in, what, a year ago into the middle of all of this, and so it's been really exciting to see the changes and the openness to get the feedback and recommendations. So I know this is not the end of the county's work, but it really is, I think, a commitment to continue to enhance the work for our youth and the child welfare system. So I just wanted to publicly thank you and your team and everyone else. So thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And Kim, I just want to say the same thing, that, you know, it's phenomenal, you get 88 recommendations, and then you to go through them and deal with them and address them all is phenomenal, and so, and I do think, you know, Child Welfare Services, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done, but you're taking it in the right direction, and I really appreciate that. This is undaunting, having 88 recommendations and dealing with them. Thank you so much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We're going to go to Agenda Item Number 21, receive an update on COVID-19 response, ratify actions. We'll turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Today's presentation will feature our Public Health Officer, Dr. Wilma Wooton, who will provide a public health update. Additionally, Artie Apostol, A.D.C. Assistant Executive Finance Director, will provide a COVID-19 response finance update, including FEMA reimbursement progress. Now please welcome Dr. Wooton.
Thank you, Gary. Chair Fletcher and members of the board. Since the last update to your board on June 14th, for the period from June 14th through July 31st, cases averaged 1,584, with a peak during this period at 2,386 cases on July 21st. For the 14-day period from July 30th through August 12th, daily cases reported began to decrease and have ranged from 679 to 1,446 cases. The average number of cases for the first week of July 30th through August 5th was The average number of cases for the second week of August 6th through August 12th was 917. Therefore, the percent change was a decrease of 23% between these two weeks. This is compared to a 10% increase in cases over two weeks in the 14-day period prior to the last presentation to your board. Now on this next slide to demonstrate the downward trend over the past month, this slide is generated to compare the 30-day period from July 12th through August 12th with the 14-day period, comparing this to the 14-day period in the next slide. Looking at cases, hospitalizations, and deaths for this 30-day period, cases by report were down 49%, going from 1,789 to 917 cases. Hospitalizations were down 6%, going from 368 to 346 admissions, and the number of deaths increased from one to three. I'm sorry, from one to two. Comparatively, in the next slide, looking at the same metrics for the 14-day period, the two weeks within this 14-day period, from July 30th through August 12th, cases by report date were down 23%, going from 1,186 to 97 in the second week, and hospitalizations decreased by 17%, going from 416 to 346 admissions. Unfortunately, two deaths occurred in each of the two weeks compared. As reported cases have started to decline, we will continue to monitor for any increases in wastewater COVID-19 detections, where Omicron BA5 is still the predominant variant at greater than 88%. Of the reported cases which have been whole genome sequenced, BA5 is also the predominant variant, but has resulted in very few hospitalizations and thankfully, no deaths. Public health continues to report on the CDC COVID-19 community-level framework, developed to help the public understand the impact of COVID-19 on the healthcare system. You will recall that at the last update to your board, our county had a medium or yellow COVID-19 community level. In the interim, the community level changed to high or red from July 14th through August 4th. However, as of August 11th, I'm happy to report that San Diego County is again at the medium or yellow community level, based on metrics for case rate, the new COVID-19 hospital admissions, and the percent of stacked inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients. Given the current medium community level, the county will continue to implement the actions specified for low and medium community levels, as demonstrated by the green and yellow boxes on this slide. Being assigned to the medium community level supports and aligns with the decline in cases and hospitalizations seen during the past two weeks. The decline in daily cases reported is heavily influenced by COVID-19 vaccinations. Local outcomes have only been possible due to the unique collaborating efforts of community and county partnerships. As of August 11th, over 7.66 million vaccine doses have been administered. Note that the eligible population now includes those individuals six months of age and older. Over 3 million or 90% of eligible San Diego County residents have received at least one dose. Over 2.66 million or 79.5% have been fully vaccinated. As well, we now have data for first and second boosters on the county website. Over 1.43 million first booster doses have been administered to eligible county residents, which is 58.7% of individuals who are eligible for a first booster dose. Additionally, over 277,000 second booster doses have been administered, which is 27% of those that are eligible. These results include aggregate data provided by Veterans Affairs and the Department of Defense. In closing, throughout the past two years and five months of this pandemic, everyone has continuously been encouraged to be COVID-safe. Everyone is urged to take public health recommendations cited on this slide seriously. Finally, last Thursday on August 11th, CDC released new guidelines making changes to recommendations on vaccinations, isolation and quarantine, testing, and other preventive strategies. The county will communicate these changes to the public with updates to the COVID-19 website. These guidelines continue to stress the importance of vaccination and staying up to date with boosters. CDC has also aligned with the new, rather, CDPH has also aligned with the new CDC recommendations. And by following these actions that have been recently released by CDC as well as CDPH, we hope that everyone will follow the recommendations to protect themselves, to protect their families, their friends, their communities, and those that are most at risk for severe illness. Now please welcome Artie Apostol, who will provide a COVID-19 response finance update, including FEMA reimbursement progress.
Thank you, Dr. Wooton. The county's weekly spend rate for COVID-19 response has dropped from the last reported rate to your board of 2.4 million on June 14th to an estimated 1.8 million, as shown on the slide today, for a decrease of 600,000. About half of that decrease is in staffing, including county and contracted staff costs, to continue to adjust and align resources as the need changes. There were also decreases associated with sunsetting various contracted services, including the transition out of the public high-risk hotel program in late June. These decreases were offset slightly by an uptick in costs for contracted vaccination services, aligning with the availability of pediatric vaccine, as well as additional demands as families prepare for return to school. 50% of the weekly spend is estimated to be FEMA-eligible, with the remainder covered by ARPA funds. On the next slide, I will review current status of FEMA claims. We are projecting 404 million in FEMA-eligible costs since the start of the pandemic through the end of fiscal year 2122. The bar shown on the left breaks out the 404 million by submission status. We have submitted a total of 290 million invoices to FEMA, shown in darker green at the bottom, with another 97 million estimated costs tied to the same projects, shown in the light green. And we have another 17 million in projects in various stages of county project development. While the value we have submitted to FEMA is fairly high, as we focus first on the first highest dollar projects, to date, we have just received payment of 78 million shown on the right. This reimbursement is tied to the Great Plates Delivered Program, which is the first large project for the county that was approved or obligated by FEMA. Once FEMA obligates a project, we can then request a transfer of funds for reimbursement. Recently, we have received good news that another large project with the counties for Helix testing costs was obligated, so we should be receiving another 75 million within a few weeks. Revenue that is not anticipated to be received in time to prove for fiscal year 2122 will be deferred and will be covered with county funds until FEMA dollars are received. We are currently estimating a deferral of 116 million in revenue for costs incurred. It is anticipated that a portion of this funding would be received during fiscal year 2223 and 2324. However, because FEMA holds back 10% of the project award until the closeout process, it could be several years before we receive everything owed. We will revisit deferral assumption in October as we get closer to finalizing the county's financial statements to see if further deferrals will be need to be made at that time. I will now pass the presentation back to Gary.
Thank you, Artie. In addition to receiving this update, we recommend your board take the following actions with respect to this item. Ratify all actions taken in response to local health emergency and local emergency. Authorize the acceptance of $1,109,770 in additional funding to establish, expand, and sustain a public health workforce to support schools with COVID-19 and other school-age vaccinations. Adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Continuance of Teleconference Public Meetings Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953." Subject to your questions, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. May I ask a clerk to call for the public speakers?
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 17 total requests to speak on this item, 10 in person and seven by phone. Also note for the record that we received 21 ecomments, all in opposition to this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on item 21 by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. All speakers are in opposition to this item. As your name is called, please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals. I'll be calling you forward in groups of five, so please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward Audra, Mark, Lana Cotton, Robert Cotton, and Paul Henkin. You may come forward in any order. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
Paul Henkin, two deaths, $1.8 million. I sure hope they were treated well. I don't want to disa whole profession. There are good doctors and medicoes out there, but come on, guys. We can do better than relying on ineffective vax and boosters, which work for a few weeks or maybe a month or two. How many people are actually dying from COVID and not just happen to have it at some point? The truth may surprise you. The number of FDA-approved COVID-19 drug treatments is growing, and there are many alternative natural treatments. Doctors need to make a list of alternative treatments to look up, and then the people who can take it, side effects, effectiveness, when to take it, and so on, even if they don't know the details of the treatment, even if all they have is a name. Sunlight, UV lamps, and colloidal silver all kill germs. People have known about these for years. COVID is a big cold, not a strange new disease anymore. Most diseases have variants. Some are called variant, some are not. Get over your COVID-centric thinking, and let's focus on diseases and issues that affect us all. We have the new CDC procedures. You haven't renewed the local emergency, by the way, since June 14th, so let's celebrate the end. Thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, please.
Mark, obviously, there's, I've already presented many times lots of statistics from peer-reviewed studies. Children are in the lowest category ever for being affected by COVID. There's lots of evidence, including insurance company data, that says there's been a 40% increase in deaths across the board. A lot of this includes things that are side effects of the vaccine, pulmonary embolisms, myocarditis, et cetera, like I've stated many times in Swiss studies in great detail with you. So your recommendation to give a lot of money to the school systems to vaccinate kids, and the fact that you're not informing them or their parents of the dangers, and the fact that they have almost no risk of anything bad happening from COVID to them at all in their age group, especially since the virus is far less deadly now, that it's been around for a couple of years like all viruses. It's, spread's easier, more infectious, but much less deadly. So it's a total scam, as usual. It's obvious that nobody here, except the people that have been paid, are wearing masks and are very concerned. In fact, everybody, all you have to do is go down to the beach to see that nobody's living like COVID exists at all. And so anyway, congratulations on the incredible amount of money you guys are getting. I hope your friends are making a lot of money. And wow, how do you guys live with yourselves? The worst part, of course, being that, like was stated before, our police officers, nurses, firemen, et cetera, have been fired while we have a shortage, and they're the most experienced people, as you force this on the public, like you're about to do to our children, misleading them and also trying to get them...
Thank you. Time is up. Next speaker, please.
Lana Cotton, the COVID narrative is falling apart. It's like the end of The Wizard of Oz when the... It's like the end of The Wizard of Oz when the curtain is pulled back to reveal a little man. COVID-19 guidance from the CDC now focuses on individual decisions. Those exposed to the virus are no longer required to quarantine. Unvaccinated people now have the same guidance as vaccinated people. Students can stay in class after being exposed to the virus. It is no longer recommended to screen those without symptoms. They've given no explanations for their changes, no peer-reviewed studies, nothing. The following is from a Substack from Canacoa. "There would never have been a problem if the medical system offered every sick person early treatment with cheap, off-patent antivirals, anti-inflammatories, anticoagulants, and antibiotics." The only requirement should have been what we have always done our entire lives: If you're sick, stay at home. Instead, they ran us all through a CIA bio-pharmaceutical war game. Locked down the world, took away human right, printed trillions of dollars, crushed small businesses, closed schools, shut down churches, wrecked supply chains, mandated mRNA gene therapies, pushed 150 million of the world's poorest into hunger, censored doctors, silenced scientists, and increased top-down control and authoritarianism around the world. They could have just used hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, doxycycline, aspirin, budesonide, zinc, quercetin, vitamin C, and vitamin D, which you can buy in any third-world country's pharmacy for a few dollars. The people and power who did this must be held accountable."
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Cotton, and I identify as stigmatized. I'm not a scientist, but I have a lot of life experience, none of which was in front of a news camera, or sitting on boards, or writing a book. I'm no epidemiologist, but I do know how to read and analyze reports and charts put out by our own health officials. Now remember, we've been told by our expert scientists and government leaders that this was a pandemic of the unvaccinated. Let's look at the charts from our own, very, very own county health department. This report should have been headlined as, "Whoops, looks like the party's over. Everybody has caught on that our vaccine never worked like we said it would." Here's the chart from our own county, June 16th through July 16th. Confirmed cases, not fully vaccinated, 17,000; fully vaccinated, 10,000; fully vaccinated and boosted, 22,000. Let's go right to hospitalizations. The same period, month, not fully vaccinated, 456; fully vaccinated and boosted, 574. Deaths, not fully vaccinated, 14; fully vaccinated and boosted, 16; fully vaccinated, 11; a total of 27 vaccinated deaths, 14 unvaccinated.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person: Oliver Twist, Mike Borrello, Sandra Martinez, Consuelo, and Sean.
Use the name Audra. Wilma, thank you for putting on your mask. I did not want to get monkeypox. Because there's, it's going around, and it's an emergency, even though nobody's died. But we need to get as many vaccines in as many arms as possible, because that's the only way to kill everybody. Yeah, so I love how you test wastewater, because it's showing a past outbreak, and you're like, there's gonna be one again. And then do you give that wastewater to the people to drink, because you recycle wastewater? So that's interesting, yeah. Yeah, and all the deaths are from the vaccinated, which is, it's weird. That's, is it? I mean, that's not weird. No, that's not. I mean, that's totally normal. That means that they're working. And you talk about protecting people, Wilma, and that's why we need to get vaccinated, wear masks, and virtue signal. Actually, we're protecting people by not getting vaccinated and not following your guidelines, because I love, you read so well. It's great. But yeah, now we're spending money to murder children with these vaccines. So great. And they don't even have informed consent. And I mean, I don't know if you know this, but a virus mutates from person to person, okay? So you can't vaccinate and have it keep anybody safe. So what you guys are doing is literally genocide. You're giving people gene therapy. It's mRNA. You're changing their DNA. And now, all-cause mortality deaths are up. And so let's, oh, where'd monkeypox come from? The vaccinated. How weird. And there's a patent on it, just like COVID. But that means it happened in nature, right? Good to know. You guys are so intelligent. I love it. It's good to know that you guys are ruling everything, right?
Next speaker, please.
Mike Borrello. So I submitted my regular monthly COVID vaccine injury report. 30,000 deaths now reported in VAERS. Now children are showing up. We have thousands of deaths showing up in VAERS. At least seven deaths reported to the VAERS database. CDC has come out now, and they're trying to step away from the pandemic, relaxing what's going on right now. We can't really, or we shouldn't be doing that. What really should be happening now, we need to look at the excess deaths, the all-cause mortality. Something happened two years ago, and it wasn't COVID. And then in 2021, it wasn't so much the COVID vaccines. It was the way policymakers locked people down, made them wear masks, and created a lot of fear in the public. And what happened mid-2020? A spike in excess mortality. And the funny thing is, it happened all at once, all over the world. It didn't happen in a wave like a disease spreads. It happened suddenly and all at once, all around the world. So that's a signature that it was policy and not the vaccines or the disease. So we shouldn't be letting this get by. CDC is trying to step back from it, but there really should be indictments now. There should be investigations and indictments as to who caused the problem, not the virus, not the vaccines.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Oliver Twist. First, I wanted to say, the presentation today looked quite different than it has in the past, and glaringly absent was the slide that says how much more likely somebody, the unvaccinated, are to be hospitalized or die from this. So there's a reason when you get sworn in on the jury, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So I would like that slide reincorporated, and the public deserves to know if the number has flattened or even perhaps inversed. I'm here to talk also about continued teleconferencing under AB 361. You keep voting on it monthly to relax the standards for you, the board, while you try to convince the public that this is actually something being done for them. For listeners who may not know, teleconferencing for members of a governing body has already been allowed for many years under Governance Code 54953B, but the requirements are very stringent. For example, they have to telecon from a home or office, and they have to post an agenda there, and they have to allow the public to speak from that site. So you can see why so many politicians throughout California want AB 361 to be the eternal gift that keeps on giving when it comes to their convenience and privacy. I have several concerns about this board's lack of transparency when it comes to teleconferencing. August 31st, where Tara left, and then magically logged back on hours later, just in time to cast a tie-breaking vote. And the June 15th meeting, where she, we were told she'd be with the roll call, or participating in teleconferencing, but 11 seconds later, she didn't answer the roll call. I now ask county council to review that meeting and to look at minute mark 836, when Joel got back up, why wouldn't he thought, we were told that Tara was there, to see if there was a quorum when Consuelo, that first speaker, spoke. I'm asking you to implement best practice to show live shots of yourself as you teleconference. You couldn't get away with putting a cardboard cutout of yourself in your seat while you listened to the meeting from the back. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Sandra Martinez. It's become apparent that the board and health department do not consider any data other than their own. Do you believe Pfizer's data? Pfizer's own documents show that fully vaccinated young children are 300 times more likely to contract COVID than the unvaccinated children. The vaccine program is an utter failure. Dr. Burke's former White House COVID Response Coordinator recently said the vaccines were overplayed, and she knew they didn't work. That was a long time ago. But everybody else claimed they're 100% effective. So look at Joe and Jill Biden, Newsom, Fauci, Borla, Lloyd Austin, all fully vaxxed, got COVID, some even got it twice, and they were contagious longer than normal. The spike protein causes inflammation. The spike protein from the vaccine remains in the body longer than natural infection, causing chronic inflammation, which is the root cause of almost all disease. This explains the increase in disease in this country that's going insane. So where's the study showing when the spike protein stops being manufactured in vaccinated people? Where's the data that shows the DNA, how DNA insertion occurs? What data do you have that it doesn't occur in vivo? Our studies show that the spike protein lasts at least four months and even longer after injection. If you don't have the data, you don't know. If you don't know, you have the responsibility to stop the program. If no one can discuss the faults and concerns, then there is no science. Anyone who continues to go along with this program is either duped, willfully ignorant, following orders, or a criminal. If you've been duped, that's okay. Ask questions and do research. Together, let's put a stop to this not-safe, not-effective vaccine program before millions more children and adults are left irreparably harmed and dead.
Next speaker, please.
It's incredible and alarming how the people are so quick to accept something based on fear. It takes seven to 10 years to develop a vaccine, and even after that, there's a period of testing. What the majority of people have accepted is, in fact, to be a part of an experiment. Yes, it is still an experiment, and the people who claim to know what they've done to themselves and have done to their research. I say to you, you are the research. So please stop saying, "Trust the science." If you can't question it, it's not science. It's propaganda. Please stop thinking that watching the television news is your research. If you have accepted an experimental injection that was made and delivered at warp speed, you've done no research. Again, you are the research. We are in the midst of the most largest experiments in human history. Conclusion of study is yet to be determined. Truth doesn't mind being questioned, but a lie does. They condition you to believe that people like us are unhinged harmful conspiracy theorists so that you don't listen to us, because once you go down that rabbit hole and learn the truths that we've learned, there's no looking back. You'll never trust them or their systems again. By a doctor, the obedient view themselves as virtuous and never cowardly. Now that the science is admitting fault, people will say, "But I did my best, and I trusted the science." Problem is, you were lied to the whole time, you're medically damaged, and you couldn't discern truth from science.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
What a place. Fletcher! What a joy to be back in front of you once again, guys. We're back. All right, so my name is Sean Frederiksen. I don't want to be here. I just drove an hour. I'm not getting paid 250 a year like Fletcher is. Wilma, you're getting who knows how much to lie. You know what's fascinating about this place? I ran here. You're in your suits, and you're just enjoying the marble, and you're 404 million, then you're getting off of these lies. All right, so, Wilma, have you done the research to determine how many people that have died in the past month from the vaccinated, like, fully vaccinated? Because, oh, actually, you did. Let me read it for you, because you post that stuff. All right, so out of the number of deaths that have happened, we're talking about 77%. Forgive me, 67% of the deaths are from the vaccinated. Why are we not talking about this? Your whole report ignored the totality of that. Why is that, Fletcher? You continue to talk about vaccinating our children, yet 67% of your COVID deaths that you're creating are from your virus that you're putting within these people. How many people are totally unvaccinated, like, haven't received an inoculation period? Have you done that study? Jim? Have you asked him for it? I think it's time, Jim, because that number would be staggering, Wilma, wouldn't it? You don't want the people to know the truth, because I met one of your voters on the beach, and I asked her, "Why is she wearing a mask? It's the freshest air." And she couldn't tell me why, but she was terrified. You're using terror and fear to control a populace. And Nora, I see the way you operate with Reamer. It's disgusting. Educate the people, empower the people, give them the truth. No longer follow this pandering. We're tired of it. The American people are tired of it, and even the woman on the beach doesn't believe you anymore. She's searching for truth. Thank you.
We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I would remind the callers that they should beat their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. Begin with our first caller. For the caller, Karen V., please go ahead. Karen V., please go ahead. Your device might be muted. We'll come back to that caller. The next caller, Jim Ellis, please go ahead. Again, your device might be muted. We'll come back to that caller.
Hi, this is Namisha.
Please go ahead.
Wanted to let you know that COVID has turned into a flu. People just talk about it as if it's like, "Oh, I got the flu, I got over it, and things are okay now." The people who are in the hospitals that you say are in the hospital are the ones who are dealing with the vaccine injury. Now, we're not going to see those stats right now, because they're not actually categorized that way, but it's just a matter of a few weeks when all of the vaccine injuries are going to be categorized that way, and you guys are going to have to feel the brunt of it. The other thing is, you have all of this money coming from FEMA and whatnot. It would be interesting to see exactly how this money was spent to bribe people, to coerce kids to take the vaccine, coerce their parents for the kids to take the vaccine, and then kick out the parents who didn't want their kids to get vaccinated. This is the issue you guys are going to have to deal with. Your mismanagement and misappropriation of the funds should not be the reason why you're asking for more money by the feds, because we're paying, eventually, we, the taxpayers, are paying for that. You guys really need to sort your shit out, and then come back to the county board of supervisor with a clean, clean bill that says that you guys are doing anything that's resourceful and positive for the community, because I haven't seen anything yet.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Diane Ake, and I have a master's of public health, and I am co-founder of Reopen San Diego. In your August 16th communication about this agenda item, you state that the requirements to renew the declaration of local health emergency and proclamation of local emergency for COVID-19 were waived on March 4, 2020, due to the proclamation of a state of emergency but, for California by Governor Gavin Newsom. But there's nothing in the state government code, section 8630, that gives the local government the right to waive requirements, review its declaration of a local emergency every 60 days when there's a proclamation of a state of emergency by the governor. Same for California Health and Safety Code, section 101080, that requires reconsidering the local health emergency every 30 days. You can't just waive a law. It's the law. In fact, Orange County Board of Supervisors is being sued right now for ignoring these laws. So I urge each of the supervisors to closely read these laws, and they're not very long. The San Diego City Council is following the government code, section 855C. They vote every 60 days, just like the law requires, on whether to send their local emergency that they declared. So why does the county continue to break this law? If the city council can do it, so can you. Has your city attorney advised you to ignore these laws? And why are you following the law and reviewing the ability to do teleconferencing every 30 days based on a local emergency, but you don't review the actual local emergency every 30 days, which is, which is required by 101080? What liability do each of the individual supervisors have for not following these laws? And will your insurance companies continue coverage if they find out supervisors aren't following this law? I request that you answer these questions in your discussion of this item and show that you're listening to the serious concerns of the public who take the time to call and research these critical matters. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
True. Last emergency update, a one-kid cream puff worm, who's waiting for me, said they can't take my joke seriously. That must mean I'm funny. But this time, let me point out a fact in this item that isn't funny at all. These supervisors are accepting over $1 million from the California Department of Public Health to promote the toxic shot to schoolchildren, despite the countless stories of healthy children requiring heart transplants after being injected. For example, 19-year-old Simone Scott, who got the Moderna shot. Not long after, she was diagnosed with myocarditis and had to get a heart transplant and died at age 19. You see, I never have a laugh at the expense of the murder. In fact, I'm tired of the injustice. I laugh only at the COVID check collector sideshows like Wilma Wonka or the supervisors. Two deaths means death is up 100% according to Wilma's math. It's like Steiner math. Well, today, there will be about 90 deaths from car accidents, still more than COVID. Now, for me, I always prefer Wonka, but let's end on a laugh from a classic June 2021 Reader article. Quote, "Wilma Wodan took the opportunity to remind her people that. The science is my domain, and the science of the pandemic is not over. For it were, if it were over, the mortals might cease to live in fear. They might cease their obedience to the science gods. Do they not know that even now, young, clean unbelievers walk among them, ignoring my commands? Harken unto Wodan when she tells you that you are not yet delivered from your affliction. Wear a mask at mega events, even if you are vaccinated, for by this highest act, you will show that you are a follower of the science." End quote. Hey, that's not Oompa Loompa. I guess I can't be ignored. You have to listen to everything I say. Take it in.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Karen V., can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Awesome, awesome. Okay. Yes, I'm calling to ask for the end of the state of emergency. For Civil Code 101080 and California Government Code 8630, the emergency must end at the earliest date possible. The CDC recently sent out updates on their notifications and advice, saying that the unvaccinated are treated the same as the unvaccinated, and there's no screening for asymptomatic people. The COVID numbers, as cases, as pointed out by Dr. Wooton, have been dropping the last five weeks for cases and hospitalizations. That is, all except for deaths in the vaccinated and boosted. Several people have rightly pointed out that the last few weeks, deaths have actually been higher in the vaccinated and boosted categories, and that is an absolute shame. I'm so happy to see that only 58% of our population have had one booster and 27% have had two. So I say bravo to all those people doing independent thinking and discernment. If they ever need or have any questions they should, about vaccine injury, they should go to flccc.net. F as in Frank, L as in Lamb, C as in Charles, cc.net for help. Thank you. The pandemic is over. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Gretchen?
Please go ahead.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, I just want to say that young kids have the least amount of risk for complications from COVID, and putting the vaccines in the schools is just setting the stage for future laws that our state government is trying to pass to allow kids to decide whether to get the vaccine. And vaccines, they don't belong on school grounds when COVID is no more dangerous to kids than the flu. Doesn't it violate the Nuremberg Code to have vaccines inside the schools? Let's let parents decide for their kids, in consultation with their doctor, whether the vaccine is right for them. It's not government's place to decide. Vaccines are a medical procedure, and there can be extreme side effects, including death. Is the San Diego County Board of Supervisors willing to take liability for kids who are permanently harmed or died by the vaccine? I have to remind you all that the Board of Supervisors, it's not your job to protect us from COVID. It is your job to inform us and let us make our own decisions. And I'll say that again. It's your job to inform us and let us make our own decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
Jim Ellis. So, yeah, regarding mandates, medical tyranny, and the overreach, I believe a personal story can help. It's a little different, so I'm going to tell a story. In 1997, I had such a bad, pinched nerve that it felt like I had a knife stabbing me in the back 24/7. It was so bad, I considered the relief of suicide over this torture. Visits to my primary care physician resulted in muscle relaxions and plans for surgery. I thought, are those the only options? A friend told me of an alternative pathway called network spinal analysis, which uses gentle pressing points on the acupressure points. I ignored her ideas and went to my doctor, who at the end of one visit, stared at me with a stern look, handed me a slip of paper, and said harshly, "You go get that prescription." At the first-floor pharmacy, I looked through the window, and I saw this long line of people waiting to fulfill the mainstream medical directive. At this point, I woke up, and I realized there had to be another way besides the routine drugs and surgery. I thought of my friend Christiane's acupressure idea. I chose to leave that pharmacy and throw the prescription in the trash. Within three weeks of treatment with this network analysis, my pain was gone, and it has never returned 25 years later. I do believe in certain aspects of Western medicine of emergency procedures. I wouldn't have a nephew without it. However, the people must be allowed to have their own autonomy and their choice of medicine. I don't care if people believe in or follow a pathway of alternative treatments that could save them a ton of money in agony, but I will continue to make my own decisions and allow for healing to come from my own research, my own doctors, my gut intuition, and my body's innate intelligence, and God-given immune system, as we all have right to.
Applause in the chamber. Next speaker.
Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
Make a motion to approve the recommendations. Is there a second? Supervisor Desmond?
First of all, I was going to ask to bifurcate number two and four in the recommendations. And just a quick comment, comment. I know a lot of it's already been said today by many of the speakers, but last week, when the CDC came out with the new recommendations when it came to COVID, of dropping the recommendation to quarantine if you're exposed to the virus, the new guidelines mirrors what most people have been doing for many months now. If you're sick, stay home. If not, you know, people are getting on with their lives. If you want to wear a mask and you're susceptible, or you're, you know, susceptible to elderly or people who might get sick from it, you have the option to wear the mask. So the fact that the CDC has changed these guidelines, I just want to reiterate that I think the emergency is over. And as we bifurcate this vote every time for the last several months, it's primarily because, you know, I'm still in favor of remote meetings, but unfortunately, that requires us to acknowledge the state of emergency. And I know a lot of this comes down to funding, and we need dollars, and we need, there's about $78 million we're still supposed to get from the CDC, but there's got to be a way we can get this funding without the declaration of an emergency. So the longer, I think, that we drag this emergency out, the next time that we have an actual emergency, people are just going to tune us out. They're going to say, "You held this thing on for way too long." Well, you know, many, many people reacted correctly, you know, when it first came out in early 2020, but dragging it out this far, I think, is really weakening any future emergency that we might propose. So, so if you look, you know, if you, just looking around, like some of our speakers have said, you look around, the emergency's over, most of these people are over it. And so I will ask if you can bifurcate number two and four, so I can vote against the emergency. Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. First vote will be on item recommendations one and three. This vote is on recommendations one and three. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
We will now vote on recommendations two and four. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
We'll go to our final agenda item today. Approve written arguments in support. Delegate authority for any rebuttal regarding the San Diego County cannabis taxation ballot measure for the November 2022 general election. Let me ask the clerk to call forward the public speakers.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 13 requests to speak on item 22, three in person, and 10 by phone. Also note for the record that we received three e-commerce, all in opposition to this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on item 22 by phone, please dial into the conference line now, using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. All speakers are in opposition to this item. As your name is called, please come forward. I'd like to invite Audra, Mark, and Paul Hincon. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
I thought all that clapping might have disrupted it. A cannabis tax on business owners will impact any business who sells cannabis on the side, like grocery store with the small cannabis section. It would be fairer to tax the people who actually buy the product, which would better approximate the proportion of the business devoted to cannabis. This tax would apply not to an incorporated area, but the entire county gets to vote on it. That's discrimination. All businesses should have an equal opportunity to fail from a tax in accounting costs. I don't think that the tax man should be able to designate a third party to examine someone's books and records. That's from the original agenda. It opens the door to private disclosure of personal information, section 22.418A in the proposed measure. The fiscal summary showed costs of $800,000, sorry, for voting expenses, $400,000 for computer, and $61,000 for tax administration, offset by annual revenues of supposedly $3 million. Does this take into account inflation, currently about 9%? And it doesn't seem to factor in lost revenues due to businesses that will have to close due to inflation, utilities, salaries, goods and services, and so on, so they won't be paying taxes. These are a few of the wrong-headed things about this. Thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, please.
Mark, obviously, when people voted on legalizing cannabis, they had no intention whatsoever of giving you guys any authority over it in any way. They want it to be completely legal and free for them to share with their friends. And as usual, the government's used it as another way to tax and get money, money out the people. You're a subsidiary corporation, your only goal at all times is to make money off the only thing you can, the people, through permits, taxing fees, et cetera. It's really sad. And of course, this is not what the people voted for at all. See, I've got a minute and 13 seconds here left to... It reminds me of Hegelian dialectic, that there's problem, reaction, solution. You guys always come up with the solution you want. And it's actually kind of hilarious that you're putting something on the ballot for people to say they want themselves to be taxed more. I mean, who would ever, why would anyone want to raise any tax ever? You guys are just spending our money, you're making... Somebody said $250,000 a year. I thought it was more around $200,000, but still, it's a lot. It's a lot. And you're just getting paid off like the, is it CPUC that's supposed to be overseeing the electric companies and not letting our rates get raised? And you guys, again, in your corporate move, left out the one line in your last contract stating that they had to keep costs low to the consumer, us. What a total scam. It's amazing that you guys aren't tried in court of law, really. It really is. But you've pretty much just made the whole system a joke.
Next speaker, please.
Use the name Audra. Oh, I don't know, Nathan. I thought maybe if you smoked some marijuana or took some, your tics would go away. Who knows? But it's so great, because it's like, you know, in 2016, the voters overwhelmingly voted this through. But that's probably not what the people want, right? So let's come in here and tax them like Mark was saying. And you're just saying it's legalized, but it's causing harm to individuals and communities. So you need to address historic harms. You'll do it for that, but not the vaccines. That's so smart. But you want to make money to make up for the injustices caused by war on drugs. So you're like, you know what? Let's not ban it. But you know what? Let's profit off of it, just like everything. Like, why get rid of tobacco when we can tax the shit out of people? And we can fill our pockets. I mean, technically, I would tell everybody, keep in the black market. Don't let the government come and, you know, usurp all your money, because, you know, they need to make up for the war on drugs while peddling drugs. I don't know, it's just weird. But I don't know, is the black market, is that racist? Should I call it the green market? I don't know, because then it would be like sustainable. You guys don't like it, so why would I do that? Let's just call it the purple market. But it's funny, because it's, you're taxing Ramona Fallbrook in Lakeside, and that money's going to be for the county of San Diego. So just like your, you know, solar panel fiascos, where it's like, you know about this, Joel, right? They're, they're taking all the energy made in Hacama and putting it in Nathan's district. It's like, you know, make these people tax, pay taxes, but it's not really going to go to them, it's going to go to everybody else. So, yeah, you guys are good at, you know, what you do. Thank you so much.
We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I would remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. begin speaking. Hear from our first caller.
Good afternoon, my name is Terri Anne Skelly. While I support a tax on marijuana businesses, I do not support the ballot statement. That tax will be important to preserve the county's resources so they can continue to fight against illicit cannabis businesses that have proliferated in many of our communities. Earlier this year, the Union Tribune printed an article entitled "Legal Illicit Blur in California Pot Market." This article described how pre-existing illicit black-market marijuana businesses used the permitting process as a cover to continue their unpermitted activities. Across the state, an honest look shows that permitting marijuana businesses has only fanned the flames of illegal marijuana marketplace. While we have marijuana business insiders speaking out with the truth behind the industry, admitting to having two identities, one legal and the other illicit, basically subsidizing their white market with the black market. The county can put a tax on marijuana businesses, but don't delude yourself or the vote or the general public that they'll be enforced in any way because they hide in plain sight. They are called the legacy market because they are so deeply entrenched that they're unreachable. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Anthony Avalos. I am a member of the CSG and have been asked by the facilitator to give these comments on behalf of the Cannabis Stakeholders Group. As a reminder, the County Board of Supervisors were very clear that cannabis legislation in San Diego was going to be social equity-led. For this reason, the social equity members of the CSG continue to be disappointed that the cannabis tax is a general tax as opposed to a special tax designed to repair the harms caused by the war on cannabis. In order to ensure that cannabis tax revenue is still social equity-focused, this ordinance must require the creation of a cannabis advisory body made up of grassroots individuals from within the social equity community. Now, the purpose of this body would be to advise on how to allocate cannabis tax revenue. Now, lastly, with respect to the language that the tax is for business, not for consumers, the CEG, the CSG, excuse me, is concerned that the language doesn't inform consumers that the expense of the proposed tax could be passed on to consumers through the increase in price of the product. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a good one.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Diane Grace. It is important to parents and grandparents to clarify our concern with the language of the proposed marijuana tax ballot measure. I am concerned that the ballot language, which reads, quote, "Measure XYZ is fiscally responsible," end of quote, is a misleading statement. Since the taxes will go into the general fund, how will the public even know how that tax is used? And it could very well be, all that would happen is, the tax would be used to support staff in their tax collection efforts. Several cities in the county have had to create new staff positions just to deal with the tax collection process. For example, Vista created the position of a forensic auditor, and the city of San Diego recently discovered that less than 50% of the marijuana businesses even paid their taxes. So the San Diego, so San Diego changed their municipal code to put repercussions for tax dodgers, and perhaps the ballot measure should address that situation now. Of greatest concern to those who are raising young adults and who love them, increasing the number of retail marijuana businesses in the county's unincorporated area will never compensate for taxes that are collected and dropped in the black hole that is general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Peggy Walker. I came today to urge rural residents to read this argument very carefully in order to understand that it puts all the harms, hazards, and risks of marijuana business expansion on rural areas with no guarantee of tax benefits, nor does it guarantee a, quote, "safe, regulated adult pot market." As stated, this argument in favor refers to voter approval of Prop 64 in 2016, which promised safe adult use. We didn't get safety. We got concentrates, edibles, and vape products at unprecedented THC potency, not even comprehensible in 2016. We got big cultivation, corporate greed, and a thriving black market. We got soaring teen vaping and ER and hospital admission rates. We got a pediatric public health problem, psychosis, violent behavior, and suicide. We didn't protect youth. We got marijuana candy, snacks, concentrates, and vapes marketed directly to kids, and child appealing marijuana logos like cookies stamped on products from packs to backpacks and sold at pot shops down the street. This tax measure will be voted on by the entire county. In Sacramento, supervisors decided against a similar measure for that very reason. It was not right to allow all county residents to vote for taxes on businesses in rural areas with no guarantee taxes will go back to rural areas. The questions we should be asking are, what and where are the benefits for rural areas? And I cannot find any. Thank you.
Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, this is Justin Joseph. Good afternoon. I'm a co-founder of Rise Up San Diego. I'm calling in support of the stance of the Cannabis Stakeholders Group opposing this agenda item. The county has sold this as a social equity-led tax to repair the harms created by the war on cannabis, not just another tax to generate new revenue for the general fund. If this is to remain a general tax, the ordinance must codify its commitment to social equity through a cannabis advisory body or something of the sort, which is made of social equity community members, monitors tax revenue from cannabis, and advises on its allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, excuse me, good afternoon, Kathleen Lippett here. Equity is an unattainable goal that uses sophistry, changing language definitions to justify abandoning equality, the fairest of public policies for equity, a policy that allows electives to choose winners and losers. The marijuana industry uses marijuana taxation successfully to gain public approval. Once adopted, the ballot loopholes are exploited for the industry's self-interest. This tax measure will not promote economic sustainability, except for those subjectively selected groups and hand-chosen, and hand-chosen by the board. This ballot argument is rife with misrepresentations of history in order to gain public approval, asserting that Prop 64 voters in San Diego supported legalized commercial marijuana. 55.6% is not an overwhelming mandate. The fiscal revenue analysis you developed only looks at one side of the balance sheet between revenues and costs. That is an inadequate fiscal analysis. Without the perceived risk of independent forensic audits, taxing grocery receipts is a loophole sure to be exploited. The measure provides relief for crop failure? What about crop failure for food farmers? The measure claims taxation will be important to preserving county resources, advancing a safe, regulated, and legal adult market, but there's no evidence that has ever occurred. And the loophole allowing the board to set the tax rate risks lowering the tax rate to zero. Last, the measure will be voted on by all county voters, and when only, unincorporated voters have standing, since it is unincorporated communities on which the greatest associated harms will be impacting. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Ann Riddle here, parent advocate. I am speaking also about my concern for the ballot measure language and my feeling that what's being represented there is inadequate. It begins by saying that San Diego County voters overwhelmingly voted for Prop 64. Overwhelmingly, they did not. 55% is no one's idea, but overwhelmingly. And that has nothing to do with what the Board of Supervisors is proposing. Prop 64 was about personal possession and personal cultivation. It wasn't about commercialization of marijuana in a retail setting, and it certainly wasn't about the severe normalization that has come from the retail marijuana market. So where did this idea to have marijuana storefronts and other businesses in the unincorporated come from? Didn't ever come from one of the county's planning groups, and they'd be clear to tell you if they were asked. Where it came from, according, that we understand from the Board of Supervisors, is a small message that came through ecomments a year and a half ago from a marijuana business that was afraid that they would be termed out as their five-year CUP was going to come to an end, and they wanted some sort of reprieve. And from that, one small item has come, a whole-blown marijuana ordinance that no one in the unincorporated territory has ever asked for, and now here it is. And the idea that taxes would ever compensate for the harm that's going to be done to the unincorporated areas seems unfortunate. And the idea, as the ballot measure says, that this tax money is going to be used for parks and fire safety and roads and health and social equity, we all know full well that possibly...
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello, this is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator. The county is proposing a tax structure, but not being transparent about the costs, which include increased costs for overstretched mental health care providers, law enforcement, and other societal costs, not to mention the cost to individuals who become addicted to high THC products. And these products are the top sellers. In fact, you can't even find low THC products because they don't sell as well, and they're not as addictive. And the young crowd, those under 25, in fact, whose brains are still developing, are exposed to mental health harms like cannabis-induced psychosis, paranoia, suicidal ideation, and completed suicide. These are the costs that we should be talking about, and nobody is. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hey, everybody, it's Tru. This item's equity impact statement talks about creating a socially equitable cannabis program, a socially socialist program to tax marijuana businesses based on the radical Oakland model, despite the legalization of marijuana in 2016, using the excuse of, "The war on drugs still reverberates in our county." First, I would ask, where exactly is it reverberating? I have never seen it or felt it like an earthquake as described. Second, if a war on drugs is bad, then why on June 28th did you supervisors basically declare a war on fentanyl drugs? If approved by voters, the cost for the tax administration on marijuana businesses is estimated to cost over $260,000. If denied, we could all pay no taxes for this tax program. That sounds pretty good, doesn't it? The interesting thing is the item says that, quote, "While the tax ordinance would create a general tax if approved by the voters, the board could choose to appropriate general funds to address the social equity purposes at a later date," end quote. Basically, that means whoever votes for this tax, if any of our votes actually count for anything on those Dominion machines or any other digital machines, it means the money will go wherever and however the supervisors want it to go at a later date. That's not only fraudulent, but that's also referred to as taxation without representation. It's un-American. It's no wonder or surprise that Nora and Nathan are eager to have their names on this marijuana, money-hungry, monkey-business ballot measure. Machine vote for their tax, and you'll surely slip on a deceptive peel.
Thank you. And Chair Fletcher, that concludes public comment on this item.
All right. This November, the voters across San Diego County are going to have the opportunity to weigh in on a cannabis taxation measure that will only apply in the unincorporated areas. Vice Chair Vargas and I have drafted the written arguments that are outlined in this board letter. The clerk has a copy that can be pulled up. We drafted this to focus on ensuring voters know how many cities in San Diego County have cannabis taxes in place, more specificity on what this kind of tax will be, information on potential tax revenues, and other information. We are limited in the number of words that are allowed. We have a couple things that we need to do to solidify behind a motion, and then we'll have some comments. So let's work through these. First recommendation in front of us is solicit any appropriate edits from board members who wish to be listed on here in terms of the argument and approve it, attachment A, which will be on the November 2022 general measure. I will make one change where it says Measure XYZ, that was a placeholder, we will change that to Measure A. And let me ask my colleagues if they have any additional changes that they would like to make. Okay. So this will be the measure that we're looking forward to going. So the motion will be to adopt this language as written. The second is, right now is docketed, this measure includes being signed by myself and Supervisor Vargas. Let me ask my colleagues if anyone else would like to join and lend their name to this ballot measure as well, to this statement to be listed. Okay, Supervisor Lawson Reamer? Okay, no one else? And then the third action would be to delegate authority to one or two supervisors to author and sign a rebuttal argument on behalf of the board should arguments come in against the measure. We will not have a time for another board meeting discussion, so we can delegate this to two supervisors to write rebuttals for an argument that comes in against. I'm happy to do this, but if anyone else feels strongly they would like to do it, two of us can do it, so.
Okay.
Okay. So then it would, will delegate to Vice Chair Vargas and myself to write the rebuttals. So the motion will be to adopt the language that you see listed above, include as signers, myself, Vice Chair Vargas, Supervisor Lawson Reamer, and delegate to myself and Vice Chair Vargas to write a rebuttal to any arguments that come in against. That's the motion. Is there a second?
One second.
All right, we have a second by Vice Chair Vargas. We'll go to you now.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Chair Fletcher, and for this co-opsmanship and the argument in support of the cannabis tax ballot measure. I think, you know, it's really important to make sure that we emphasize that we asked the county to take a comprehensive approach that advances a safe, regulated adult cannabis market. We've also stressed the need to create a program that develops opportunities and prosperity across our county, particularly in the communities that have been heavily impacted by the war on drugs. So our argument in support of the tax ordinance explains that the tax is necessary to bolster the county's overall budget and ensure that we have funds to invest back into our communities. So I'm looking forward to having conversations with our voters and happy...
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Desmond?
Well, I have a request. On the ballot language, no, last, last sentence, I have to ask. Right now, you said you've got the statement, "The Board of Supervisors urges you to vote yes." I'd like to ask if you change that to, "The majority of the Board of Supervisors urges you to vote yes."
I think we could say these supervisors urge you to vote yes.
That would be thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Motion and any seconds. Please vote.
Chair Fletcher, that motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
At each meeting, I will ask if any of you want to provide a brief update on committees, bodies you sit on, other... bodies you sit on, other organizations. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief here. I know it's been a long day. The Community Engagement Panel on the San Onofre decommissioning met just recently. The dismantlement work is progressing on schedule. It shows the dismantlement of all the outer buildings right now. The domes still are not going to be coming down until about the 2026, 2027 timeframe. So far, about 128 million pounds of material has left the site, mostly by rail, going to a storage facility for, I guess, less toxic nuclear material, went to a facility in Utah. For the Action for Spent Fuel Solutions Now Coalition, the Department of Energy right now is preparing a summary of responses for their request for information from interested consent-based parties and municipalities from all over the country. Senator Manchin, same guy, the same senator, it's in the news here a lot lately. He's the chair of the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee. He has a bill that would create a single-purpose federal agency to oversee the development of nuclear waste storage sites. The bill would also authorize work on a consent-based siting for a new federal repository. And one last item to share is, a couple of weeks ago, the Senate Appropriations proposed shifting federal funding for the Department of Energy's interim storage inquiry into the government's nuclear fuel cycle account. And this was requested by the White House. And so these are actually positive steps being taken by the federal government, realizing their responsibility to cite and put this spent nuclear fuel. So with that, that's all I have to report. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We have two adjournments in memory today. Supervisor Joel Anderson will honor Mike Hemrich.
And that was a typo. That's me.
Oh, Supervisor Desmond.
[laughing].
Supervisor Desmond.
The family is destroyed. Okay. So this is, I'm sorry, in memory of Mike Hemrick. In closing today, we adjourn in honor and memory of Mike Hemrick of Borrego Springs, who unfortunately passed away on July 1 of this year. For 10 years, he volunteered with the Borrego Springs Chamber of Commerce. He had a kind smile, a gentle manner, and greeted local community members and visitors from all over the world. Mike also volunteered at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints as the president of their elders' quorum. On the onset of COVID-19, Mike's role as a treasurer of the Borrego Springs Ministers' Association took on and increased an important role as requests for assistance poured in from hundreds of local families, as well as thousands of dollars donated through the Borrego Ministry Association. So Mike worked feverishly with all the members of the Borrego Springs Ministry Association to match needs with financial assistance, cutting hundreds of checks for locals in the community while keeping tight and concise financial records. Mike's goodness and kindness will be missed by all. So our deepest condolences to his family and his friends and to the Borrego Springs community. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We'll now go to Vice Chair Vargas, who will honor Carmen Ramirez, Chair of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. It is with a solemn heart that I adjourn today's meeting in honor of our good friend Ventura County Supervisor, Chairwoman Carmen Ramirez. Chairwoman Ramirez passed away last Friday, August 12, after a tragic and unexpected pedestrian accident. Before serving on the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, Chairwoman Ramirez served on the Oxnard City Council for 10 years after a longtime career as a legal aid attorney, a community problem solver, and a voice for marginalized people, as she usually, you know, referred to herself as. In 2020, she was the first Latina ever elected to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors in 147 years of the board. And in January of this year, my good friend made history as being the first Latina chair of the board, paving the way for so many. She chaired the California State Association of Counties Coastal Caucus. She was my colleague on CSAC, a member of the Latino Caucus of California Caucus Members, the first person who called me when I got elected, and one of the first people who called me when I got elected, and a mentor to so many Latinos in our community and to our community as a whole. She always led with her heart, fighting for social justice, the environment, and the rights of working people. Supervisor Ramirez always had so much wisdom to share, but more importantly, she was a kind person who always had the community's best interests at heart. She had a great story of determination and perseverance that will continue to inspire me along with so many after her passing. Although she is no longer physically with us, she will always be a true inspiration, and I know that many of us will continue the fight for social justice and equity in her honor. Her presence and words of encouragement are absolutely going to be missed. My deepest condolences go out to the County of Ventura, her family, especially to her husband, Roy Bryce. It is my honor today for the County Board of Supervisors to adjourn in her honor and memory of our true social justice champion. Que vivas, Carmen Ramirez.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We will now resume non-agendized public communication along with closed session public comment.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have eight remaining requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, two in person, and six by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward. I'd like to invite Mark and Consuelo. You'll have two minutes to address the board. Paul.
I'm Paul Hincon.
Paul, I called Consuelo and Mark.
Oh.
He spoke, I believe, spoke earlier this morning.
Mark, there's so many things. Obviously, every day, for people who are watching this online, every Tuesday that they have this meeting, they have their promotions, and the companies send the people that are representing their company, partnering with the city of San Diego. And then it's always followed by lots and lots of people in opposition to just about everything that they do. These people never listen to us at all. They literally don't care about us. They don't care about you. And then they pass stuff all day long, every day. I don't think any ballot measure gets presented here that doesn't get passed. It's either three to two, four to one, or unanimous. But it always passes because of these three people on the left here. So it's such a ridiculous scam. There's four things wrong with the government. I mean, there's a lot of subsidiary things wrong, but people really need to pay attention to the fact that the U.S. is a corporation. It shouldn't be. That's in direct opposition to the idea of buy and for the people. It's a small group of shareholders making money, leeching off the system. There are videos by Clint Richardson you can see. If you look at Corporation Nation, it's a much longer title, but Corporation Nation, Clint Richardson will bring it up on YouTube. Also, we've been divided into 11 mega regions now. Someone like Nathan Fletcher, who's a professor of political science, knows what an authoritarian society he's helping develop. And we're not even the U.S. anymore technically. We're the North American Union. This is happening on regional levels here, from the top down and the bottom up. It's all a total scam, and people better pay attention. Rosa Corrie talks about that, Rosa Corrie, Part One, K-O-I-R-E, on YouTube.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And Paul, I see that you requested to speak by phone this morning, since you're here in person. If you'd like to come forward.
Okay. Sorry. Paul Hincon. I hope that Monkeypox is not going to be like the COVID fiasco, both of which started with lies and missteps. A lie that most people accept is that the WHO declared Monkeypox a global emergency. In fact, the WHO Advisory Board voted nine to six against it, but then the director arbitrarily declared that the rules had elements to declare a global emergency. So he did it himself. Remember Hitler, Stalin, Mao, those guys? And do you remember COVID? It was running like mad on cruise ships because, like so many plagues in history, people were confined with inadequate sun and ventilation, two things that could have limited or stopped the infection. Then came Miermar. Two cases flown in. It could have been stopped right there, but these infected people were allowed prematurely into a crowded, poorly ventilated city. Government and doctors blew it, and then we followed. Monkeypox. Twenty-seven hospitalizations statewide, mostly pain management, no deaths, confined mostly to a specific community, I believe 96%. The sad part is that you guys and scientists who seem not to trust nature and would rather shoot us up with these drugs first do not seem to realize that UV light and sunlight destroys this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Folks, I want you to take a minute and step back to 1971 with me, if you will. That's the time when a group of fellows, George Soros, and Klaus Schwab, and Henry Kissinger, and the likes of them self-righteous motherfuckers, decided to start a club that's now called the World Economic Forum. Right from the get-go, their agenda has been depopulation, globalization, a one-world government, and a one-world currency, a world controlled by the elite. Living in their utopian world, will they have a select few that work as servants below them? Well, here we are 51 years later, and now we've got Klaus Schwab, the leader of the World Economic Forum, standing up telling people that he's penetrated over 50% of Canadian cabinet. You look at the World Economic Forum website, there's Justin Trudeau, Kristi Hyffeyland, Jagmeet Singh, all part of the World Economic Forum. How in the fuck, when they are sworn to uphold the mandate of the World Economic Forum and force forth its objective first and foremost in every venture that they undertake in their life, how can they be running Canada for the Canadian people? How can they be working to strengthen our economy, to rely on our natural resource base, to make us an independent nation? How can those things be happening when they're working for the World Economic Forum who is destined or set out to fucking destroy us, to kill us off? We've got a huge conflict of interest. What we have is treason happening. Justin Trudeau assigned the Canadian people on as part of a pilot program with the World Economic Forum and their digital ID system. So now it's in place in a couple of fucking airports in Canada already. How in the fuck did the World Economic Forum get all the fucking information on the Canadian people to make that pilot program feasible, workable? Our fucking information was either given or sold by our fucking political leaders to an outside entity. Look it up. Treason, people. Fucking treason. It's time that fucking changes were made. Tars and feathers, and a fucking railway tie. I'll be the first one up front holding that fucking tie on my shoulder as long as I got them cocksuckers up behind me. We want our fucking country back. We don't want fucking criminals running our fucking country. We don't want good, honest fucking people who have calluses on their hands, who understand hard work, who understand what it's like to fucking raise a family, who now have to fucking decide whether they put groceries on the table or gas in their fucking tanks, thanks to the likes of you motherfuckers and your agenda. The time has come, people. Draw your fucking line in the sand with your heel, and don't let them fucking cross it. I love each and every one of you. God save Canada and the U.S.
And Chair Fletcher, I'm not seeing any of the individuals that requested to speak by phone in the conference queue at this time. And with that, we do have one request to speak on a closed session matter on the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority agenda. I'd like to invite forward Audra to speak on that item. And again, you'll have two minutes to address the board.
Use the name Audra. You're doing so good, Nathan, at what they want you to do. Evaluations, right, for employees. Who's going to be doing those? You guys? You are, Jim. Is that for real? Oh, my gosh. Who evaluates you guys? Anybody? I mean, we do all the time, but I mean, you know, who does it that would actually do something about it? Nobody, right? But then you guys can go and evaluate other people and be like, like in one of the agenda items, "We're just going to take this back, this land, because you guys are acting fraudulently." But it's like, who keeps you accountable? Supposed to be the people. Supposed to be the people. But you guys are on your pedestal, and like, Nathan, I bet that brought you real close to home with Klaus, listening to that. Was that good? So good. Because it's just a meeting, right? You guys aren't implemented to destroy everything. Who's evaluating you, Nathan? Yourself? Are you like, do you look in the mirror and you're like, "I'm going to evaluate myself today. I'm doing so good. So good." Yeah, and then who evaluates? The sheriff. So funny. It's like a big old circle jerk. It's crazy, but you probably like that, too. I don't know, but it's like, even with county council, they don't, like, you guys, if I got to refer back to county council, and then county council refers back to us. There's no way to have anything happen until you guys are on. And that's why these machines have to go. Because otherwise, Nathan, you're going to be there. But it's going to be so fun. I look forward to visiting you every time.
Thank you. I conclude public comment on the closed session item.
That we see on adjourn.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under Item 24 on today's agenda and Item 1 on the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority. If there are any reportable actions that were reported out during the planning and land use session of this meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, August 17, 2022.